Okay, it's May 7th, 2018. I'll call this meeting to order roll call smiling.
Here.
Hamlin.
Here.
And Murphy here. Approval of the minutes of last regular meeting, April 23rd. I'll make the motion we approve those. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Number five, discussion, Susan Cummins?
Susan, right there.
Okay. We'll give her just a second.
I forgot my quilt.
Okay.
You ready ladies?
Oh, we're ready if you want.
Okay, number five, discussion possible action regarding the proclamation of OHCE Week. You're up.
Well, thanks for having us again this year. OHCE Week started yesterday and we'll go through the 12th. And we brought our proclamation, if you want to look it over and hopefully sign. This week is when we kind of highlight all of the activities and community service that we do. Some of the other ladies want to give some input on what those things are. We have five groups all over Woods County and currently we have 72 members that are very active. So, do a lot of community service, we raise money for scholarships, both for high school students. We have a scholarship that goes to college students, we work with the 4H, so that's...
Very good.
All good.
Do you want to talk about some of the things that your clubs, your groups are doing this week?
We are promoting, trying to promote membership right now, so we're trying to improve our membership. We have 18 members currently in our group and so our focus was to bring more members into the group this week. So, we've got several activities planned throughout Winoka, my group is from the Winoka area, so we have several things planned, they hung ribbons on the poles, on the Highline, not the Highline poles, but the poles downtown on the square with plant flowers. We too do a scholarship, you know, locally down there. So, those are basically the things that we have going on, so made some banners to hang up and that kind of stuff.
Well, I think you all did an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Now, do you accept, I mean like five want to join?
Sure. We'll take your time.
I agree.
I'll tie. Well, sometimes our husbands get recruited because they love their muscle labor, so.
There are some counties that have male members that are welcome to join.
How do you spell Prue?
P-R-E-W. We'll start with Prue, P-R-E-W.
E-T-T.
Okay.
And Joanne is J-O-A-N-N-E, no cap. And the A is not capital.
Twenty-three ways to spell Joanne.
Yeah, I know. Please say it again.
L-I-S-A?
Yes, sir. Susan, Pauline, two L's.
Two L's?
Two L's.
I'll make the motion that we approve the proclamation for OHCE. This week. This week for OHCE Week. I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Okay, while you're here, discussion possible action regarding the use of the courthouse lobby for OHCE essential oils make and take workshop.
I'll make that motion. When's that gonna be?
Uh, they don't have a date on here.
It's Thursday.
Thursday.
May 10th. From 12 to 1.
You said how many of the...
Yes, May 10th, from 12 to 1.
Okay, it's just gonna be a demonstration or workshop up here, so.
Yes.
John, you made a motion again.
Yeah, David second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
If David shows up, can you make him pretty?
Uh, yeah, Tim, awesome, but then give it their best.
Yes, well, I don't know essential oils to do that.
They would say, David, we're sorry, but there's not enough oil in the world.
That's not the oil for mind oils or not.
Might make you smell better or something.
Oh, that's an improvement.
Yeah.
Ain't gonna be the fountain of youth.
Well, thank you so much, we appreciate your...
Appreciate it, thanks for coming in. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you ladies.
Okay, number seven, discussion possible action regarding the following road crossing permits, select energy and C&amp;W construction. He broke, right over. Was one of them yours or was one of mine?
One of them's David's, two of them are John's.
The select D1, and that's yours.
I think that's...
And the same guy just called me and he's trying to do one down here, so that's yours. I have no idea where it's at. This is, this has got to be the...
We weren't...
Yeah, this located on County Road 305.
Road 305.
Well, west of my... They're up there. It's... Oh, that's north of Logan.
Russell, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Mine is on, uh, oh, let's see. Make the motion, C&amp;W construction. Mine's gonna be on County Road 450 between Carter and Canadian. And I make that motion, we accept that. Okay, the first one, the second one's a no fee.
C&amp;W is no fee?
Uh, the first one was a $1,500.
And that's select?
That is, uh, C&amp;W.
Oh, okay.
David's select, D1's select.
Okay.
D3's making a motion for two, two crossings, one's a $1,500 fee and one's a no fee. Cause they just meant in my damn work. The second one is, uh, it's on County Road 460 between Blaine and Beckham. I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. That covers the C&amp;W for D3.
Is that used to living in select energy? I'm not sure I understand what happened.
David's looking at it, that's his.
It's a light flat. Yeah. It's a, it's one of the soft lines, it's a, it's a frac, it's a frac line. You got both here done?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make the motion to you for select energy, uh, for County Road 305, invasion road and building road.
I'll second.
No, you aren't, that's yours.
Uh, I did not got it, I see my name. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Who made it more loading? Is there a fee? Is there a fee?
No.
Having a hard time finding water.
Well, that's what I was telling them, moving water around down there to... And that was another one that just called me for, he's a, he's a permit guy too.
Yeah, I was telling him that Palm's a permit, people in that one, which I'm one.
Yeah, till it rains, I don't know if I'll do it either. Okay, all in. Okay, number eight, approved, disapproved monthly reports for the following, assessor, county clerk, treasurer, health department, court clerk, election board, and sheriff.
All there.
All there, hallelujah. All move we do that, and all the seconds that we done. All in favor? Aye. Aye. That's like the first time, isn't it?
For a while.
Very good, things are looking up.
Yep. I just wanted to go have a meeting so, for a few days, give him some time.
Yep. Well, it's also getting close to the end of the year. They're having to watch a little closer.
Yeah. Staying in the game. How far south of that was that? Five hundred, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
It's gonna be Greensburg Corner, how long is that, one, two, three, four, five south of 40 by 40? Four thirty.
Around that corner, Greensburg Corner? That's 4:30, that half mile around the corner.
So, could I say, can I say five south of Greensburg Corner?
Five south and a half, yes.
Yes. Five south, one and a half blocks.
Of Greensburg Corner.
Do we need to do it there too?
I guess I missed that probably.
Sorry, yep.
Stuck it together?
Yep.
Pretty sure that's five. Pretty sure that's five, huh?
Yeah, I think so.
Right.
Yeah, five here.
We'll go on to nine and you can figure it out. Discussion and possible action regarding monthly appropriations. You good with that?
I'll make the motion, we accept them monthly appropriations and...
All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Six. From Greens, or from church to the blockhouse on the bottom.
But it wasn't...
Oh, that's right, that's right.
I hope it's witness?
When we had that fire down there, we were all back there.
Yeah, we're taking action on it, that can't be here. What, they want to have some kind of revival or something, but they, do they do revival? What do they do? They don't believe in Christmas or something, don't they?
I'm not sure what that is. I think you're right on that, but this is a stumper, so that's an easy one.
I, I think they want to be here and we'll just let them explain what they, they, they want, when they do come. Cause I'm not certain what it pertains to.
I'm not really sure of the difference between church and library, same.
I didn't try. I don't know. I'm a Baptist.
I'll keep that simple.
They really?
Hmm.
Have the people clean.
Makes a house stay.
No, smell good.
Yeah, smell good.
Depends on who you're asking.
For which fragrance?
I gotta tell you.
You need to catch one of these.
I thought it's gonna be here, I'll tell you actually. Remind you, remind me to tell you, cause it's funny.
It's nine o'clock.
Oh, really? Oh, she's there.
What sacrifices you gotta make.
Ruben's kinda, well, ready for, yeah, extension month.
Okay.
ATT finally got the sheriff's office fax machine working, people just not, you know.
So, we're teetotaling on Pioneer and Funk Machine at the moment.
Who'd like that? Who loves? It's perfectly interesting. Cause it's gonna be, supposedly, a big one. Need a new cash card.
Taxes.
Revenue. Teacher raises.
Yeah.
Okay, number 10, we're gonna take no action on and skip. And number 11, discussion possible action regarding fiscal year 2018, 19 annual community sentencing contract.
Yeah, this is what the state, Julia brought this over, it's the BAM, they have to turn it in before the end of this fiscal year. I just need one signature, and that's just the non-completion certificate that they have to get from everybody, that then I would have stamped the two places for you guys, so that you can all sign. And then we'll have to put them back there again July 1st, but...
And what is it basically, or just the, what is, what is it?
It's something that they, they have to go into an agreement with us because...
Who's state?
The state, with DOCP, which...
Department of Corrections.
Julia and Chris. Yeah, they have to go into...
And then they have to bid with these places, take bids from the places that take the juveniles.
On the detention claim stuff.
Yeah, right.
Transportation.
Yeah, it's not juveniles, it's just on the...
Community sentencing.
Oh, okay, community sentencing.
They're bringing this little building over.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
But this, this deal is a deal that owns that they're gonna certificate for competitive bidding, we're gonna approve that too, that they're, we're saying they're gonna do it, go about bidding out the certups they have to buy by following all the rules.
Well, this is kind of normality, we gotta do it.
Yeah, so, okay, you got a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Can you do both of these?
Yeah, two places.
Oh, you go green danger?
Yeah. More to it. Okay, number 12, discussion possible action regarding removing Julie Hellman and adding Gina Schaaf as receiving officer for District 2. Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. There's that.
That's Julie, definitely.
You're moving on, I'm not sure where. Number 13, discussion possible action regarding the transfer appropriations within the general fund from visual inspection M&amp;O account to visual inspection personal account in the amount of $1,000. I, this is just transfer right, but within the office up there, Renata, I mean, just someone's just getting that time of year with that stuff.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
That's their pipeline inspection.
Yes, yeah, the visual inspection.
You made the motion for general?
No.
I'm sorry.
David second. Fewer clothes.
I was making sure it was getting signed, I think that should be bad.
Okay, number 14, discussion possible action regarding the transfer of appropriations within the general fund, $555 from Treasurer M&amp;O, $100 from Treasurer's capital outlay, 600 from general government travel, and 1,200 from general government personnel, 1,200 into treasurer personnel, and 1,255 into Treasurer's trap. That's another thing, just the end of the year.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
I need to get this on here.
All three of us up here, or?
Just one.
Okay.
It's right here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, number 15, discussion possible action regarding transfer of appropriations with the general fund from South Tax County Wyatt to the real fire in the amount of $10,000. That's just a deal hoping to get them through the end of the year, business, all the multiple fires and expenses we've had. So, a little short.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Again, they just signed out low.
Yep.
To the garden floor.
Okay, number 16, discussion possible action regarding the bloodborne, born pathogen exposure control program.
Well, even though this...
Blood on the floor. That's ugly.
And it's saying that we will offer to the higher risk, not when you said, a high risk.
Yeah, okay.
That we would...
We got some, I know, I know, I got some that's got some nasty blood.
Well, ones that, like, Steve has to, you know, he deals with the trash, the Sheriff's Department, that we would offer to pay for them to get hepatitis B vaccinations.
We have to do that on the fire department.
Yeah.
Couple of years of it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we're just gonna prove the fact that we're gonna pay for the shots, so...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, all in favor? Aye.
So, what kind of shots? It's, it's to keep him from getting hepatitis B or something.
B or C?
Probably B.
Uh-huh.
It may be all of them, it may be.
It's B.
It would just be, okay.
One's worse than the other for getting these.
They're both pretty bad if you don't get treated.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea, cause that's probably risk work.
Yeah.
That he don't reduce the fire and ambulances.
You know what, they throw them trash cans down here.
Right, exactly.
Um... If the fire department done that, we're gonna do, do papers after this being... I'm gonna say five years ago, that might've been the city, the city might've done it. I know some of us had, some of us, uh, it's kind of a nurse deal and nursing.
I bet you're not, that it's more for the assistant, the ambulances than it was for the fire.
Well, anybody that touches it, people with that blood and...
Right, but that's what I'm getting at, I mean, it was more of the assistance with the ambulance runs. The rescue is what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, ambulance.
If you're gonna be on a rescue truck. Number 18, any new business?
Seventeen.
Oh, seventeen, sorry about that, I checked it off. Discussion possible action regarding Tyler Technologies, NCO 10.
So...
What do you think?
I think they're getting a lot done, I mean, uh, we can, we've been able to balance, we're up to date on that. Reconcile with the Treasurer's office and, um, and, um...
Kiki jelly.
That's bad when you think great. But, and then they've been working real hard on fixed assets and, um, they're, they just had another update. They should have my account summaries now, right, and the appropriation address, but I haven't had time to...
Everything that's, that's in your office that you have to deal with?
Is going good, yes.
Going good, do you think that they're gonna have it all? If we say, yeah, let's, let's ease into this now, uh, by July, do you think we could have the bugs possibly worked out? Maybe makes a good decision on, yes, we want to do this, or no, we don't?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, if they continue on like they have been, and they've been working really hard, they've got quite a team going.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they've been really good, so, yeah, if they would've done this.
It's, it's, it's just down to the tweaking.
Yep.
That's what it is.
They were, they were, one of the shots this morning, they, they were really, I mean, they're being really confident.
Yeah, if they, if they continue on this path that we've got along, I'm good with them.
Yeah, we do.
Do, do we need to take any action, or are you...
I don't know, I'd like to.
Just wait.
I'd like to. I'd thank folks for giving those.
Do, when, when do we sign the contract?
Um, it'll be July 1st. Yeah.
And that, if we say, yeah, we're, we're interested in, in, let's go ahead and make this the best we can by July,
we'll have a lot of that behind us.
Oh, yeah.
And, and...
It should be a new contract for a new fiscal year.
And we'll be able to, you know, do some talking with them or whatever we gotta do. Because I think we're not just the same as everybody else, cause we're kind of big and we've been through a lot of this, so we need something.
Yeah, I think, I think we're just gonna acknowledge... Yeah, I think, I think we're just gonna acknowledge that at this point that they're, they're moving forward. We're moving on forward, I don't, I don't see any need for any action this time.
Just, we're discussing, and I like what I'm hearing, I mean.
Yeah, they do. Oh, they have, it's, it's been unbelievable. Yeah, it's been awesome.
Okay, now we'll try any new business. There you go.
I don't know if it happened before, we got it. No new business? You're gonna be all right.
All right. Okay, let's approve or disapprove blank person.
I'll move, we approve this.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Now you can adjourn and have your cramp.
Go.